All right, good evening, everyone. We are going to go ahead and begin our meeting. I'd ask the clerk to announce the meeting and call the roll.
A special session is being held on Thursday, February 5th, 2015 at 5:30 PM. Fifth floor conference room for final bond and sale note. Immediately following is a presentation by Mark for the Homeless Services Coalition. Roll call. Maddox.
Here.
Kane. Markley.
Here.
Walters.
Here.
Philbrook. Walker. Townsend.
Here.
McKeonan.
Here.
Muggia. Holland.
Here. And do we have anyone calling in for this session? No, okay. All right. So tonight, we are looking at a general obligation bond temporary note sale. I will ask Administrator Bach to lead this off.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, this is a process that we start out really in the fall or as we come into leading up to the winter when we start going through and identifying all the projects that we'd approved in our budget process for this year. We go through, identify those, then we look at, so what we need to add from new temp notes that we'll be putting on for new projects that'll be onboard coming this year, and then we look at all the bonds that we have in place. Our CFO and then our outside advisor get together and they determine what our strategy will be for going out for a bond issuance. That information was brought forth to the governing body and as we talked about where we were for bond sale, so we lead everything up to the point where we get tonight where later on the agenda we'll have the final sale of the bonds and interest rates. But we thought it was important for a special session that we come forth and talk to the commission now about, you know, kind of a follow-up. Last year, as you recall, we had asked Moody's to come in, they gave a presentation to the commission, we talked about where we are from a bond rating. We had to go back out, get a new bond rating. As we went through that process, we did get mixed results from the two, you know, one positive, one not as positive as far as how they looked at our agency this time around. And so we want to talk about that, how they look at us from that perspective, and then where we're ending up as far as the interest rates from this project or from these bond issues. So with this, I'm going to turn it over to Lou Levin, and I think many of you have met, sitting beside him is Dave McGilvery with Springstead Advisory, their chairman, who's been with us for some time and helping us to stay on course with bond issues. So, Mr. Levin.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bach, Mayor, Commissioners. I'm just going to give a real brief overview of the results of today's bond sale, and then I'm going to turn it over to Dave to talk about, add his perspective, and then talk about our credit ratings and how that turned out. Tonight, before you, we're going to have a series of actions related to the approval of the bond and note serieses. We had four different bond issues. They varied whether they were a city bond issue, a county bond issue, whether they were tax exempt or taxable. For the city issues, we'll have to approve both an ordinance and a resolution. For the county, financing, we'll have to approve simply a resolution. These were, as Mr. Bach said, that they were, were the result of our budget and capital improvement process. We're going to permanent financing with the bonds of totaling $59 million. That actually includes a refunding that was authorized in January of $24 million. On the temporary note series, there's $67 million in temporary note projects. It was a, I'm going to characterize it as a very opportune time to go into the marketplace today. The municipal market is near a 20-year low. That means the interest rates for the different maturities, and we issue our debt over a 20-year period on some of the bond issues, they're a little bit less, the refunding, for example, is a 10-year bond issue. The county bond issues is a 15-year bond issue, and there's reasons why the terms vary. But anyways, we received on our six different bond issues, we received at least three bids on each bond issue. The true interest cost associated with each bond issue was under 3%. So when we did a 20-year financing on our largest bond issue, which we're labeling as 2015A series, our total interest cost even for that one, a 20-year financing was under 3%. On the refunding, we estimated significant savings going into it, and they actually exceeded our estimate. Our total savings on the refundings are going to be approximately $2 million or 7% of the scheduled debt service. The other thing I wanted to mention, which Doug alluded to, is our credit ratings. We maintained our credit rating of double A with Standard and Poor's, and we did see a rating downgrade from Moody's from 2A minus to A1, which is a one notch reduction in our rating. And with those general comments, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. McGilvery.
Good evening. I'm Dave McGilvery, Chairman of Springstead, your financial advisor. And I have probably three pages here that sort of give background first to the ratings themselves, so you can see where you have been in R. Second, what are the key drivers in the credit rating decision by each of the agencies? And three, sort of what each agency said about unified government in this particular rating sequence. And what we're talking about is unified governments' general obligation rating. General obligation is full taxing power of the local government unit. It's usually the highest rating of a local government unit. So Standard and Poor's and Moody's, they each have their little coding systems. Triple A is the highest, it's a very select group that has a triple A rating. Then you have the double A category, and you can see on the Standard and Poor's side, they're capitalized, and they have pluses and minuses. And on the Moody's side, it's capital, A, small a, and then 1, 2, and 3. And you get in the A category, and you can see what, it's A plus on S&amp;P, and A1. And I kind of stopped there. And what happened in this review by Moody's is they took you from the double A3 to the A1. So as Lou said, one notch. And just a little bit of context, on the bottom, I talk about outlooks, and it has positive, stable, and negative. And each of those outlooks, the agencies interpret that a positive outlook is a high probability if things remain unchanged that you'll go up within a two-year period. A negative outlook is that it'll go down in a two-year period, and stable, obviously, is no change. In 2011, Moody's assigned Unified Government a double A3 with a negative outlook. So in 2011, they were sending signals about the rating, and they had a negative outlook. Now, that's more than two years ago, and as we'll get into, there was a key item relative predominantly to the general fund balance that was in large part driving their decision. So it went beyond the two years, and it's here again, the outlook is a signal really to the investment community of where the credit quality of a given entity is. So that's sort of the coding system and the explanation of outlook and a little history on where you were with the outlooks. So for anybody, what do they use as criteria to determine a rating? Before I get just the wording on this slide, you have to remember that a credit rating, any individual rating, is based on a comparative analysis of, you know, your credit quality with other local governments throughout the country. So it's comparative, and it's national. So you're looking at how you stack up nationally with your sort of numerical and fiscal, physical profile against everybody else in the double A category or the single A category. So it's you, and then you place in this comparative analysis. They have points, and they give more points for certain things than they do other things. And the top two areas where they give the most points are your financial status and the socioeconomics. And between the two agencies, a little difference, but in both cases, these have the most emphasis. So financial status is generally focused on the general fund, the general fund balance, the mix of revenues and expenditures. They go beyond that to, you know, the rest of the entity's financial situation, but most of the discussion is on the general fund. They also look at socioeconomics, and there's some things here that we put on household income, tax base growth, population, employers, those sorts of things that are composite, housing values, a socio-economic package. Because here again, we're talking about general obligation, which is property taxing. So what is the tax base? People, their capacity to, you know, pay taxes, their housing values, their employment base, et cetera. So financial status, socio-economic carry the most weight. Secondary emphasis is governance and management. What does that mean? Governance is the decisions you make, the plans you adopt, CIPs, long-term financial plans. Part of the decision-making process. Management is the sort of financial reporting you have, things that Lou and Doug and others provide you in terms of the rigor of the financial management system, and the overall management of the entity. And debt burden, which is, you know, how much you owe. And it's somewhat paradoxical that people, they have debt as a lower emphasized item than some of the other things. So with that, I'll go to what they said about you. So here again, Moody's was the one with the downgrade. And they, I'll just explain, as you can obviously read it from the screen, declining level of fund balance below stated policy. And so that's a policy of 10%. I think the most recent number is 7.9, somewhere in that neighborhood. And it's not just, you know, it's a trend line. Over time, it's sort of come down. It's come down below your policy, it's come down below what other double A communities have in the bank as the fund balance. When they say lower liquidity, that's sort of all money, so it's cash throughout, you know, not just the general fund, but money in general that you have, cash in all of your funds. Dependence on economically sensitive revenue streams. This is just sort of classic for Kansas communities, because in the general fund in particular, sales tax is a funding source, and in other states, it's purely property taxes. And at least in the opinion of the rating agencies, sales tax fluctuate more than property taxes. So here again, this is a national competition. Other states don't have sales tax in their operating system, so their, the rating agencies contend that they are more stable, sales tax is more volatile. Below average socioeconomics, I described that earlier in terms of socio-economic items, and high debt. So you've got high debt on the GO side, the temp notes, and some of the sales tax transactions, not necessarily the star bonds, but they view sales tax as unpaid by the same tax base. So you have that, that situation. I think in some ways, the Moody's decision was driven by the fund balance. On the Standard and Poor's side, you know, it's interesting, two agencies can look at the same set of numbers and facts and come up with different conclusions. And so you have Standard and Poor's, strong budget flexibility, strong cash liquidity, which is directly opposite of the second bullet under Moody's. Very strong financial management and governance. They have a measure called the Financial Management Assessment. You have strong, which is the highest you can have. Here again, that's both governance, you know, and management. High debt burden, that's consistent between the two. And you have a stable outlook from S&amp;P, but they have noted in the outlook that does not expect future rate decline unless the fund balance experiences further declines. And I said, you're about 7.9% in my talking with the S&amp;P analysts. You said if you start to get towards 5, then S&amp;P would probably put a lot of light in terms of, you know, potentially downgrading. So the fund balance is a big driver in that. So I believe the full reports are available or will be available.
Yeah, they do have them.
And I would say that once they make a rating change, it's at least, everything stays kind of the same. It's usually a couple of years before there's a change in any other direction, mainly because the primary audience is bond investors, not necessarily, you pay them, but their real clients are the bond investors. And bond investors don't like a lot of rating changes. So if you do, if something changes, it's going to kind of stay there for probably at least two years unless some other event happens, positive or negative.
Commissioner Philbrook.
So being at seven and a half right now is not necessarily a bad thing, because it's, we're going up.
Right.
Okay. But you say we'd have to go down to five for them to downgrade us?
As Standard and Poor's has said, that if you headed the other direction and went down more in the five or six, then there'd be a higher probability that they might downgrade us.
Okay, so in other words, don't go down.
Yes.
Okay. And so Lou, what's the chances of us going up?
Well, the budget that we adopted for 2015 is, we're hopeful that we're going to actually have a slight increase in fund balance. It's a, I'll say that the adopted budget was pretty neutral, revenues equal to expenditures. And so as long as, we're hopeful that revenues will in fact be in excess of expenditures, and we know under Kansas budget law, we cannot spend 100% or more than 100% of our budget. So we'll be below that, and so we're
We're hanging right about.
We're hopeful that we'll have a slight increase in 2015 in fund balance. I think the challenge will be the budget, the upcoming budget, the 2016 budget, and any decisions the governing body makes to, there's still outstanding issues related to capital needs, employee compensation, and other decisions or
So it's going to be tough to hold the seven and a half? Is that what I'm hearing?
I think the government is, is going to have to be, and the government, I'm referring to
Us.
To you as a governing body, decisions that you might make related to tax policy or expenditure policy.
Okay. Thank you.
I think I wanted Dave to also discuss briefly maybe how the rating impacted the sale today. I mentioned we had very strong results, and we were very pleased with the results, but we believe there might have been a slight impact upon our overall interest rates.
First, a rating in the A or double A category is still a very good rating. So there's nothing about marketability, or people will line up to buy your bonds, and they lined up today to buy your bonds, and you got, if you look at, about the same number of bidders that you got last year. So that's not the issue. It's what's happening to the interest rate, you know, it's credit quality, better credit quality, lower rates, less credit quality, higher rates. The situation right now, as Lou said, is the interest rate market is amazingly low. And I've been here a number of years, and last sense of recession, they, oh, the market's really low. Well, it's even lower now. And so what that means is all these things get compressed. But I would say, nobody can tell you precisely, and the, that your interest costs, if this hadn't happened over the life of these issues in this market, you know, you're paying hundreds and hundreds of thousands of more dollars in interest over the life of the issue. And a more normal market, you know, where it's not so low, and it's here, and there's some, then it would be more. But, you know, it's not an exact science. And in fact, given the 2011 where Moody's had the negative outlook, you know, there's always, already been some of this sort of credit concern factored into the interest rates already since '11.
Well, I want to say, I'm pleased overall that we came in where we did, where we held the line in one and we only downgraded one notch in the other. We knew we were up against this, we talked about this extensively during the budget, and I thought we made pretty aggressive steps as a governing body to make sure, to do everything that we could to not jeopardize our bond rating. We did set a priority in our strategic plans to look at fund balances. I will say that the last audited books that they reviewed were 2013. And so the steps we took in '14 and '15 have not yet been reflected in their review. And so there's always a delay in terms of what data they review. And so in a lot of ways, this is a reflection of our book, because 11 really, 11 and 13 really marked the end of the recession nationally. Not that we've all come out of it completely, but we saw the end of the recession nationally. And for us to get through the recession with just a modest downgrade and to maintain the other, I think is overall very positive. And we also have a better budget in '14 and a better budget in '15 than we had in '13. And so I think that's a step in the right direction. One of the things about our 2015 budget, it was the first budget since the recession began that we did not borrow from any fund balance in order to meet our budget. And so that's a very positive sign. I think that will be reflected in future budget reviews. But I think overall, we knew in our budget last summer that we were facing the potential of a downgrade, because we'd been put on notice with a negative outlook for the previous two years. We knew that was an option. I thought we took aggressive action to balance that, and I think we came out of this as well, as really as we could have hoped to, and I feel very good about it. So I think it's, it's not great news, but I would say it's good news. And so from an overall perspective, I think that's very good. And because interest rates are so low, the penalty is not anything like what it might have been in other years. So hopefully, as we're thinking about fund balance and decisions we make in this budget year, we need to keep this in mind. We said it was possible, now we've seen it, and we need to continue to protect that credit rating, because it really impacts us long-term. So anyway, thank you to Lou and to Springstead for your continuing good work for us. But I think it's, like I said, I don't think it's great news, but I think it's pretty good news. So any other thoughts or questions about this?
I'll just make a general comment. The mayor did participate in the credit calls, which was much appreciated, I think. He gave the point and a strong emphasis to the, to the, each of the respective credit agencies that the governing body is concerned about fund balance and is taking efforts in its strategic planning process as well as the budget process to strengthen fund balance. And I think that message was received well by the rating agencies.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Tonight, we will vote on accepting the results of the bond sale. And so we will have a series of, what do we have, 15 votes to take? Literally?
There'll be
Nine.
Eleven, eleven votes.
Eleven votes. Just on the, because each sale for each category, we have to vote on separately. So those, all those results, we will have a blue sheet, because every time you go to market, the numbers adjust just by a small percentage. But we will be voting on the accurate numbers, and so we'll have that blue sheated tonight, and then we'll just go through one after another. So gear up, get a motion in second lined up as we move through them. Because it's, we got to step through them all.
I didn't see that, I could see that.
No, yeah, we just got to keep them coming. So anyway, thank you to our staff. Our financial staff does a great job on this, and I think we should show them a hand of appreciation.
Appreciate it.
All right. That brings us to our last item for the special session and the last of our Mark presentations. So the Mid-America Regional Council does a lot of work on our behalf. The Wyandotte County is heavily involved in the Mid-America Regional Council. Many of you serve onboard through them, and they have a variety of services from which the Wyandotte County directly benefits. And so we've heard about emergency management, we've heard about their master planning, the economic outlook that they give us, the population studies that they do. Today, the last one we're going to look at is the work they're doing on the homeless population. The homelessness is a regional issue. Folks who are homeless don't really care what the county or city or state that they're in. And so we share that responsibility for caring for the homeless. It's a responsibility I take seriously, and I know many of you do. I think it's a, it's a responsibility that we have as a city to care for the most vulnerable. And so Mark is going to talk to us today about how they are going to, how they're assisting us us in this program.
Thank you, Mayor.
Welcome. So I'll invite each of you to introduce yourselves as you begin your presentation.
Well, good evening, I'm Marlene Nagel, and I'm with Mid-America Regional Council.
You do need to speak directly until we are recording.
Good evening, I'm Marlene Nagel, I'm with Mid-America Regional Council.
I'm Jason Bone, I'm the coordinator for the homelessness task force. And we'll send some more around this way if we don't have enough. So you've got a copy of this graphic in this binder. I also want to share, we've got a couple of other things in here that the task force, that we're not going to spend much time on, but a little bit of a status update on the task force and the things we've been doing over the last couple of years. A document that actually came out of Wyandotte County, the cost benefit analysis of housing the homeless. You guys may have, have seen that at some point in time. Kim Wilson Housing put that together to really demonstrate that it is much cheaper to house, especially a chronic individual, than it is to continue to have them be on the street using emergency services and other things. And so, that sheet kind of documents that for you. So, that's that. And then there's an investment plan. And again, I want to share our vision for what a homeless system could be, but there's an investment plan to address the needs of at-risk children and youth. We worked with the policy unit from University of Missouri, and did a really nice assessment of the whole region's needs around at-risk children and youth. And they came up with some really important findings. And so, this is the executive summary, there's obviously a lot more in our website. And finally, you have a rack card for KC Metro Housing, and this is one of the big wins of the, the task forces, that we've tried to bring in really state-of-the-art or national best practice around finding housing. So people can do it on their own, instead of having to go to an agency and, and search features. And I'll share a little bit about, more about that, but want to make sure you all have that information. So, that's the package you've got. I want to let you take that home with you and have that, but we'll, we'll jump right into our presentation. I also want to announce that, or share that, and you guys probably know her, but Amy Pickford is here, and she's the coordinator for, yes. And she has been a, a big help to the task force, and helping to manage things here in Wyandotte, and keep us all connected. And that's, you're going to hear that's the kind of the theme tonight, is that the, that HUD is asking us, and HUD's, you know, brings that into the, the community, the money around homelessness, is wanting us to work together more and more as a unified system. And then, in our metro area, that means the three, the core four, really playing well together. And Amy's been a big help in helping us keep that connected. So, going to share this graphic with you, and I'm going to go through it, and, but I want to start with that, if any of you guys know anything about homelessness, it doesn't look the same from person to person. You've got a domestic violence, a woman who leaves her home with her children, or not her children, but she's, she's going to be homeless right away. You've got an unaccompanied youth, who's going to look very different from a veteran who just came back from one of our recent, our recent wars, and is struggling with post-traumatic stress disorder. It's going to look, that's even going to look different from an older person who's been in the system for, or been living on the streets for a long time. And so, you've got these different populations. It's not the same, and it's not possible to come up with a this, and this, and this, or one size fits all for all of them. But the one thing we, we can figure out, because they're, they're not all the same, is that they have different levels of acuity is kind of the official word, but complexity of need. And so, there are some of them that don't have a lot of need, they come into homelessness, and they really don't need much, and they're going to get themselves right out of homelessness. And that's about 65% of those who have a housing crisis. And then there's another percent that have, or group that have mid-level needs, a couple of issues going on, and could use some help, but that's about 15 to 20%, somewhere in there that have mid-level needs. And then there's another 15 or 16% that we call, you know, we use that chronic word, or that have been, are very complex needs, they have mental health issues, they have substance abuse issues, they've been on the streets for a long time, they have other health vulnerability issues. And so, that's the chronic population. And it's really, in the percentage, it's, it's a small percentage of those who end up homeless, but it's a large percentage of those that are using the resources. But it's also very important to know that those are different, because if we start thinking about the resources that are available, and you guys clearly just had a discussion about resource availability, and we know it's not just, you know, it's not unlimited, right? And so, we got to think about, what are the resources that are available to the homelessness arena? And how do we dole them out? Because if we, if everybody comes up that says they're in crisis, and we give them a big ladle of this bucket of water, we've quenched the thirst of the first couple that get there, but then we run out very quickly. And I know you guys know how to think about this, but if we, or if we decide to just give a spoonful out to everybody that comes to us, we get through a lot more people, but people just keep coming back into the system. And we don't actually fix the problem. And so, I want you to think about that, as we try and lay out a system that helps us understand, are we dealing with somebody who could probably deal with us on their own? Are we dealing with somebody who needs short-term, some intensive short-term, a little bit of rent help, and they're going to be able to take care of it there on their own? And when I say that, it's, it's based on the literature and the research and the studies that are out there, that says that those populations, that these dosages work. Or are we dealing with somebody who has complex co-occurring needs, and may need some kind of supportive living and case management, maybe for the rest of their life? Although we're finding that even a lot of those clients can come off of those permanent supportive housing units. And so, the buckets kind of to share with us, that we know it's limited resources, and if we figure out better how to, how to distribute those to the right people, we're going to have a more effective impact on homelessness across the board. Does that make sense to everybody? Because it's kind of the premise that the rest of it is built on, and so it's important that we, we understand that. So, we're talking about a unified system, and a unified homeless and housing system. And one of the most important or key parts to it is a coordinated entry point. And I want to be clear, this doesn't exist yet. This is our vision and what we're trying to move towards. But there's so many different agencies or systems that connect with homeless people. In the metro, we know that there's about 8,800 students going to school every day that are considered homeless by the school systems and their definitions. They don't have a way to directly connect those people to the rest of the housing system. There's, if they know somebody, that works, but if they don't, they don't have a direct way. We've got foster care, there are a lot of youth aging out, it's not a great term, but aging out of foster care, that are ending up homeless, that are ending up using resources. And there's not a good connection between that and this system. They don't know how to make that connection. Obviously, our, a lot of our churches and faith-based organizations are attempting to do something. And then the reentry population is another area where, I literally got an email today from the federal prison in Indiana, I have no idea why they got my name, but saying, this person's going to come out next summer, they have no family connections, they have no, anything else, can we help get them a plan? And so, the prison systems and reentries across the board are looking for ways to connect to housing and provide that. I have not responded, because I don't have a good answer, because we don't have a coordinated system, and I'm not 100% sure why somebody from Indiana is connect, you know, contacting us here in the metro. But, that's a different issue. So the first point is, can we get a coordinated entry point where there's one number, there's one website, there's one place that, you know, the police can use, that schools can use, that street outreach can know, that they, this is how we connect. And I've been told, you know, where this comes up is, we've got groups that go out and do feeding, and handing out things, and they don't know how to connect when they're talking to somebody under the bridge, or wherever they are, how to get that person into housing. What's going to do? Because that's not what they do. And so, there's not even a good connecting point for them. And that's, that's one of the things we're looking at. And so, once they get connected to the system, the, the next point would be to have a systematic protocol that the whole community would use for diversion. All right? Because we also know, if we go through the literature, that 80% of those people that are in housing crisis, or think they're in housing crisis, don't actually need housing resources. And that's huge, because it's sometimes, those people show up at the right time, and they, they use a housing resource, but they don't need a housing resource. And so, the diversion is a way, if you're talking on the phone, or if you're, you know, even the schools or something like that, would help somebody talk through what other resources are available. Because I know that, when I'm in crisis, or I think I'm going to be in crisis, I don't think the best then, and I may not think of all the options. Or it might be an opportunity for less resources to go help keep them in whatever housing or stable housing they are in. This isn't ever meant to keep people from getting other services that might help better stabilize their family and other things. It's just meant to say, we know the research says, you're not going to need the housing resources that are very, very limited. And so, that's diversion, and we're building a protocol. Obviously, over time, we would want to move towards even more prevention. So if somebody's going to get evicted, or if there's their utility issue that's going to lead them to be homeless, we want to be able to better coordinate and tackle those at the appropriate time, so they don't even become homeless. It's not something we are heavily working on right now, because it's almost a separate system unto itself that needs to be tackled in its own way. So after diversion, and I've already shared most of the populations, and it's, again, it's because each one of them has some different roles and responsibilities, or way you interact with them. So, safety is a high priority with domestic violence issues. Youth are hard to find. Veterans, we need to get connected to the VA and make sure we're using all the resources that are available. Then the fastest-growing population is families. And then finally, you've got your chronic, who have a high complexity of needs. And how do we, how do we build a structure that helps the people that work with those populations work with them appropriately? And so, that's an important consideration here. And if you look there to the left, you've got temporary shelter. And it's to say that our shelters are an important part of it, but it is never the end goal. It's not the end goal for somebody to just get into a shelter. The goal of shelters should be to help people get to permanent housing as quickly as possible. So it's supposed to be kind of a temporary thing, and we're working very hard in our relationships and interacting with the shelters and the whole community to help make sure that happens. So the process would be, if somebody comes in, and actually, this is a good time to stop. Is there any questions just over what I've shared so far? So I don't leave any behind. It's making perfect sense, this is, okay. But the, the process would be, so we figure this out, is that there needs to be a triage, a triage process that would help us to know. And we actually have a tool, it's called the VI Spadat, that was used in the last point in time count last week, that actually gives us a score between one and 20. With 20 being, actually, no one's ever scored a 20, because it would mean they were very, very close or imminently to death. But shy of that, you know, you've got your 10 to 19, 10 to 20, that need permanent supportive housing. And so, you can see, it puts them on a pathway on the road. And those that are scoring a five to nine on that, the literature, the research has shown that rapid rehousing, because they're low to moderate needs, is a very effective tool to helping them. And rapid rehousing is essentially somewhere between six and 12 months of rental assistance and case management to help them stabilize and move towards better employment and staying stable. So that's the housing triage. And if we all agree on that, across the community, we can bring those lists of people together and say, you know what, we've got five 17s in the community. Probably should sir, you know, find them units first. And we would go, when we had a unit, we would go after that 17, because they're the most complex need, and, and we would offer that unit to them, because all of this is obviously based on, you know, offering. But, that would be for permanent supportive housing. Then we would also have a list of those that score between five and nine. And the nines would, the first one on the list of the nines would say, okay, we've got a unit for families, we've got a unit of rapid rehousing. We would dedicate it and go ask that family if that's what they were interested in. So that's what the tri, housing triage is supposed to do, is help figure out which pathway on this road we need to be on. And because our community still has important transitional housing, we've also got to figure out how to weave that in, because transitional housing can actually meet the needs of very low needs all the way to very, very high needs. And so, it's, it's figuring out where that fits in. It's not talked about as much, because the federal agency HUD is really diminishing their funding towards transitional housing, and actually, it's going to be more and more up to the community to, to maintain any kind of transitional housing that needs to be there. So that would be housing triage. Once we've triaged them, and we know what pathway we want them to be on, the next step in the process is a common assessment tool. And this is a much more extensive, so the first tool, the triage tool, can probably be done in 10 minutes. I was over at City Union Mission last week during the point in time, and three and a half hours, I think I did 20 or 30 of them in that time period. Just, you can kind of crank through that, and we will know of all those people, all 215 that were done at City Union Mission, what their rank is according to this tool. So we'll know those, we'll have those in order. But the common assessment is, all right, what are the areas of their life that we need to help them stabilize? From, you know, financial stuff, employment, there's 15 to 20 domains, depending on whether they're an individual or a family. And what that does is allow for a very common language across service providers. Because I'm sure you guys know that people move around our region, right? So people that are in Wyandotte can end up in downtown, and vice versa, and they move around. And I've literally talked to some police officers that know there's a bridge in between Missouri and Kansas, and that depending on which police force shows up to talk to somebody, they go stand on the other side of that line. Because they know that the jurist, the lines can't be crossed right there. So, they know where the lines are, and they know they're moving around. And so, a common assessment tool allows us to all speak the same language. And when they stop in this program, and they go over to that program, they can kind of pick up, and we know, we don't have to go through a bunch of assessments with them yet again. It's one of the hardest things, and a lot of veterans actually give up on trying to find resources, get, they get told no so often, because they get sent to the wrong place. And then, when they do get there, they have to tell their story so many times. You have to tell your story every single time. And so, that would be one of the hopes of a common assessment, and some of these protocols being in place, is that, all right, we trust that this is where their score was, that this is what they need, and then we can just start working with them instead of having to retell their story. And obviously, the housing options that we're looking at are rapid rehousing, transitional housing, and permanent supportive housing. So, one of the goals is to make sure that if somebody says they're rapid rehousing, we know what that means, and that we can compare it to other rapid rehousing programs, because data and effectiveness become a big part of this. Because if one rapid rehousing can do it for, you know, let's say, $5,000 a family, and another one costs $10,000, and they're getting exactly the same results, clearly, we can house twice as many people at 5,000 a person. And so, that becomes very important to know and understand the data, that we can compare what, what each of the different agencies are doing. And then permanent supportive housing is very complex needs. After that, you know, engaging people in services of various kinds according to their assessment. And then, at the top there, you've got, you know, these housing, we've got KC Metro Housing.org, but that's to represent housing location. It's one of the big, big challenges for case managers, who are not trained in finding units, and not trained in talking to landlords, to try and house people that have very complex needs. And I've literally had case managers tell me they're spending three to five hours in their day trying to find units. And what that means is that three to five hours isn't actually spent on doing things that help stabilize that family or that person, because it's spent on finding housing. And so, housing, centralizing to some extent, housing location, and we had a summit on this last week, where we had 75 people from the community, all think this was a very good idea. But you, you kind of find somebody who's really good at talking landlord, that talks about cash flow, that talks about, you know, I don't even know the words real well, but how many of their units are open or empty, those kind of things. And they convince them that if they're working with us, and they set aside some units, that we can keep them filled, that we can keep their cash flow higher, that we can keep their occupancy rate up. their occupancy rate up. And so we're trying to work on steps towards, how do we do that as a community? So that if an agency, the case manager has a person and says, you know what, I've got a voucher, where can I put them? They could make a call and say, hey, we've got these three units that kind of fit the price range, that fit that, and you can offer those to the client. So there's even choice involved in there. Because I do know right now, a lot of times, it's like, I found one unit. I found one unit, that's where we're going. And they're very excited about being able to find that. It's also an opportunity to work with landlords and really engage them to help make sure that it it's not detrimental to their property. Part of this is also part of our prevention work, and that's KC Metro Housing, and a search function that landlords could enter their units in. And the neat thing about KC Metro Housing is a landlord, and I actually own some units, and so I've done this, you go through and you register, and then it says, what populations are you willing to work with? And you just check these boxes of homeless or unaccompanied youth, or ex, a reentry person, or disabled, or those kind of things. That information is hidden in the background, so case managers can find it. So if you're looking for something, you can go on there and you can find a unit, or you can get a better chance of finding a unit from a landlord who's willing to work with you. I haven't done it for Wyandotte yet, but at one point, I did a search in Independence for units under $500. And the first thing, just open search showed up with 150 of them, which is a little overwhelming if you're a case manager trying to find somebody 150 units. So then I typed in, or I checked the boxes, homeless and reentry, and it dropped it down to 30. I'm much happier to try and 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 look at 30 units that I know are available that have landlords who are willing to work with the client that I've got with me. And so that's why we're, as part of what the task force is doing, we're trying to build support towards sustaining KC Metro Housing, which is, which the backend is powered by socialserve.com, which has actually been in the state of Kansas for quite a while and is is used in the in the state of Kansas. So Kansas has been supporting that for a while. I want to go back, I just want to share in the acuity level and why this triage process is very important. One of our domestic violence shelters really struggled last year, wondering why they weren't being as effective, because they were trying to do the practices the way they had had read them, they were doing the things they were supposed to, and they were using more money and more energy, and they were not getting the results they expected with the clientele they thought they were working with. They went in and they did the VI Spadat or the triage tool with their whole client base and found out, whereas they were funded and their expectations were to be a rapid rehousing agency and do that work, that 60-plus or 70% of their clientele actually had such a high level of complex needs that they needed permanent supportive housing. So in that case, we were using the wrong treatment modality for a whole group of people, and it was frustrating the case managers and not being effective at helping people stay housed. Does that make sense to everybody? They were like, oh, this makes so much more sense that why we were struggling so hard. I just think that's a a really telling story, and and other, you know, other agencies have done the same and and found about the same thing. Finally, the last component of a unified system is an effective electronic infrastructure or a management information system that allows us to share the the housing triage tool, that allows us to share the the common assessment information, allows us to compare and know what what agencies are reaching things. And so in our case, the community has been using MAC Link for years, and it has done exactly what it was asked to do for those years. And now, as we move towards this unified system, we are asking substantially more and and more challenging and different kinds of things than they've done in the past. And so it's really important that we enhance and/or change our our system to meet the needs that both HUD is requiring and that the community says is is what they want and what the literature says is best practice as far as working with the homeless population. And so that are, it's kind of the components of a unified system. Are there any questions over it at this point? I've thrown that out very quickly. I know you guys' time is very valuable. Yes?
Yeah, I had a kind of specific question about a population. I know on your thing here, you list some certain populations, but are there any population groups that are uniquely particularly hard to find housing for? And specifically, I'm thinking of individuals who are on state or federal registries? That seems to be extremely challenging for families and folks in that situation. Any advice on that?
I would say that's where having somebody dedicated, a housing locator, or a better integration of, and and don't get me wrong, a lot of our agencies are doing housing location, but they're doing with people that can't dedicate their full time, and it's not their expertise. But if somebody is, literally, that's what they do, is go find units, there's a better chance they're going to be able to find units that are appropriate, because in that case, you you both need the landlord, but you also have a lot of limitations on actual distance from from schools and daycares and those kind of things, which literally has to be somebody on the ground knowing that it's not close. And it's very, you're right. That is the, probably the most challenging, because because quite frankly, even SAVE, which supports HIV/AIDS survivors, has a huge landlord list, and they're able to manage that population. And so that population, if they're, and if you add reentry to that, it's it's very, very challenging. But I, so other than saying that the plan is, and what the literature says, is that this housing location and kind of doing it centralized and doing it professionally as opposed to as a, on a side to your case management work, that is the best practice in that area to even help that population.
I think, Gordon, the other point that I would make is that part of our work is bringing landlords together with local agencies and trying to help share information about what are the most challenging populations in terms of helping to find them housing, and then trying to understand the landlord's perspective and and strengthening those relationships so that when there is a difficult client or a difficult client group to serve, we have a landlord base that is more willing to work with those agencies, as long as, you know, wraparound services or other supports are there to to help make sure that tenant is successful in in a unit when placed.
We're going to take a few more questions to make sure everyone has a chance to to ask questions for this and make comment. Just to let the TV audience know, because of our, we have a major 7 o'clock public hearing that's coming, we're going to send our tech staff from the TV up here downstairs. So we're about to go off TV for this meeting, so we can spend the next half hour getting prepared downstairs. But I didn't want to cut, I don't, we don't need to cut this meeting short. We'll go ahead and take remaining questions for this group. But I just wanted to let the TV audience know that the feed is about to drop as we prepare for our 7 o'clock. Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you. And I've got a whole list of questions. I might have to come in and sit down and have a meeting or something. But one of my questions was, I see prisoners, prisoners slash jail on the sign bar. And one concern is, and I've heard this probably two or three times in the last month, is that a lot of prisoners get out of jail with felony convictions. Once they have felony convictions, they are restricted from certain housing services. I wanted to know what role that plays, because a lot of them are homeless.